All rise, regular scheduled meeting of Warren County Commissioners and Downers Sessions. First of all, Wels presiding. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have cell phones, please turn them off or turn them on vibration, please. Gentlemen, if you have hats on, please remove them.
Thank you. I'm pleased to not have the Ministry of Central Church of Christ lead a prayer. Mr. Ben Bailey, an act of prayer, please remain standing for the pledge to the play. Ben, if you would, turn to the microphone. Thank you.
Let's pray together. Father, we're thankful for this day of life and for every blessing that you give us, and we honor you and recognize you as the true and living God. Father, we pray especially at this time for the men and women who represent this community in this county. We pray, Lord, that peace would prevail. We pray that wisdom and that the Spirit of Christ would be in each one of us. And, Lord, we pray that apart from personal prejudice and bias, that the good of the people of this community would be considered. Father, we are especially thankful tonight for Jesus, for the great sacrifice that he made. We pray that you'll help us to live our lives in such a way that we can glorify you and be an example to the world around us. We love you and thank you for first loving us. Through Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Salute.
Let's rejoice as we glorify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Terry Bell.
Here.
Lawrence Fox.
Here.
Carl E. Baldwin.
Here.
Carl E. Baldwin.
Here.
Teddy Boyd.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Wayne Cochrane.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Earl Jones.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Jerry Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prager.
Here.
David Ray.
Here.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ridley.
Here.
Tony Savage.
Here.
Dane Starkey.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Here.
Melissa Hensy.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have adoption of the doctors. Have a motion to approve the adoption. I'd like to make a motion to amend the doct and remove Resolution Number Five. Please, may I ask for a discussion, please?
Motion to approve the doct.
Motion by Morris.
Second.
Second by Terry Bell. Okay, again, I'd like to amend the doct. I could remove Resolution Number Five for the night, please. There's been a motion to remove Number Five from the doct. The night is our second, please. Carl Baldwin, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We go back to our original doct. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Everybody has received their minutes in their packet. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, then Lisa, would you please read the minutes?
I make a motion to suspend reading of the minutes.
There's a motion to suspend reading of the minutes. Is there a second? Second by Melissa. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I say aye. Thank you. We will now go into our elected officials, Department of Reports, Finance Department, Miss Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have a copy of my report in your packet. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Okay, motion to adopt. Yeah, who said a second? Second by Terry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, this animal control, Miss Patry. Thank you.
Chairman, enter the floor. I'd like to bring to your attention the numbers for my cat intake is off by one for myself. I neglected to add one cat, which happened in September, so my numbers of my cat intake is off by one. And you have the rest of my report in your file. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve. Second by Morris. Any discussion?
I'm muted here, so I've got a question for you. How long are you keeping the cats and dogs before they're euthanized or given away?
Well, we don't give them away. We adopt them out, and it just depends on the animal. If they're sick or aggressive or mean, they stay the minimum number of days and then we euthanize them. But we're moving a lot up north. They have a lot stricter spay neuter laws up there, and they take a lot of our unwanted animals that we have here. And so sometimes we have to keep them a little bit longer to get them on a bus to go north, but it's better than using them.
What's the minimum dates before you do euthanize them?
Five and seven.
It says here that four dogs die of natural causes and 21 cats. Do they die of old age or?
No, sir. The cats died of upper respiratory and fadie kitten syndrome, and the dogs have heart problems.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Martin, I want to thank you for passing that inspection and saying you're going to survive for the next two years.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Question, please.
All in favor of both? Now say aye. Motion to last. Charles, you have a question?
No.
I didn't see you. Okay, we'll move on today. And Professor Commissioner Martin, certainly you have a copy of my report. Have any question I can answer?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Billy Earl, Commissioner Jones, approved. Second, second by Commissioner. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Health Department, we have Miss Fox and Miss Debbie Johnson watching tonight. You would like to come to them. Pauline, thank you.
This is Debbie Johnson, our regional director. She's at the Cookville office. Each of you have my packet. If you have any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Baldwin to adopt. Second. Second by Baldwin. Any discussion? And then Mark, Fox, here's the reason he had five hours to quit, and a nurse practitioner did. It's a problem, I think?
No, sir.
Why so many nurses, nurse practitioners quit?
We've had one nurse practitioner that quit. She wanted to go back to the hospital. She did not like the hours, eight to 4:30, five days a week. She wanted to work the hospital hours and have a more flex schedule. We've had two RNs quit in the last little bit. One is actually going to be working at a different facility with a cancer facility, and we've also had another one. She actually was at the hospital and went back for the same reasons, schedules. And we've had one other person, not an RN, but she's a nursing assistant, and she's going to be staying at home.
And I got another question.
Okay.
Here, while back, you stood up. So you're supposed to be at Warren County Care Department three days a week. Here lately, you ain't been out there three days a week. What's the problem?
I cover three counties. I cover Warren, White, and Cannon. I also have meetings in Cookville at the regional office, as well as meetings in Nashville, trainings such as those. Warren County does get most of my time. Out of five days a week, they do get most. I have been on vacation and have been out with a sick child for about three days, but other than that, generally, I am in Warren County two to three days a week.
Look, since I became the chairman of the welfare committee during my new election, you ain't been elected because I've been going out there shit. Are there any other questions? Miss Johnson, go ahead. You got.
Can I speak to the lady issues? And again, I'm just here wanting to meet County Executive Wels and meet commissioners, and nice to be here is to tell you that in our nurses and nurse practitioners salaries follow the state salary guidelines. They are not as high as the hospital pays, and we struggle with that all across the region in losing good nurses and nurse practitioners back to the hospital. Again, we just can't compete with the pay, and because of the shortage of nurses and nurse practitioners, hospitals have gotten better about operating more competitive hours, more family-friendly hours than they have. So it's a problem that we struggle with, Mr. Martin, and, you know, all across the region because of salaries. We have, the way that public health is set up is that we have a local nursing supervisor and a local clerical supervisor in every county who are people on the ground to make sure that operations run smoothly. We don't have enough positions for county directors to cover one county, so they travel between the counties. We've had a lot of meetings lately about Ebola and getting our staff prepared in case anything were to have any cases in our area. A lot of our money is grant funded, and we have meetings to make sure that Andrew's involved in to follow all those grants. But she's always available by phone to the staff if she needs to be, and we have regional staff that can come here if they need to be and to do that. And just to say again about Ebola that we don't certainly have any cases in Tennessee right now, which we're really happy about that, but we are being trained and public health will be the investigative team to manage contacts and to make sure that people, anyone was isolated, that needed to be isolated, and that our community was protected. So we're having daily calls about that now, and just to make sure that we're prepared and.
We also have flu shots available at the Health Department. Anybody would like to come in and get one. Walk-ins are available for those.
Thank you both. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving say aye. Opposed? Thank you. The IDB Financial Report. Now, Girl Linda, before you, Girl Linda has changed.
No, I'm going. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Girl Linda has been sick and has actually been working more than she should have, and it's probably why she's not here at night. I don't believe you probably appreciated her singing bass for you. I believe you have a copy of my packet, my information, and be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Bobo, go ahead. There's a motion. Second by Gary Prager. Any questions? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, we're planning to mention Tommy Lee. I don't believe he's here. All of you, you have the report there in your packet. Do you have any questions? We'll have to get to Tommy tomorrow. Say what, you got any questions? Motion to adopt.
Thank the motion, Doc.
Motion, Commissioner Baldwin, second. Second by Commissioner Carl E. Baldwin. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, going into the committee reports, Budget, Finance, Commissioner Wels.
Mr. Chairman, this time Budget Finance has nothing to report.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Carl E. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, building and grounds has nothing to report.
Thank you. Economic and Agriculture Development, Commissioner Lee.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, Economic and Agriculture Development has nothing to report.
Thank you. Education, Commissioner Starkey.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, we have just come from a meeting with Education Committee and the Warren County School Board and Financial Management Committees, listening to two presentations for the upcoming school projects, and I think Mr. Cox is here at this time, and if he would care to speak to that, we'd sure like to.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Mr. Chairman. The process we started with for the new project started about two weeks ago. We had eight proposals that were submitted from architects. We narrowed those down to two. Those two were interviewed tonight in conjunction, as Chairman Starkey said, with Financial Management and Education Committee along with the School Board. School Board meets Thursday night. Hopefully, we'll have a recommendation to come from the Board as to which architect they would like to choose to move forward with the plan. We'll bring that to the Financial Management Committee or the appropriate committee that Mr. Wells designates on the 30th, and it's been a really good process. It's been very transparent and very open. Appreciate the commissioners that have been here. We've had some that were not on the committee come, and that's kind of where we're at, at the present on the projects.
Thank you, Bobby.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve.
Salute.
Motion by Blaine Wiltshire, second. Second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye. Health and welfare. Mr. Martin. It's time, it's time to have welfare. I have nothing to report. Thank you, sir. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Prager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County just, Highway Department just finished up a 3.5-mile state aid project, and that's about all we've got right now to report on.
Thank you, Commissioner Prager. Let me go back. Miss Harris, she wants her money tonight, I can listen to her.
I don't get any extra money. Financial Management has nothing to report other than we did meet jointly tonight with Education and the School Board. I believe we'll have a meeting next Thursday night, although it has not been called as yet, next Thursday afternoon. So committee members should be getting a notice in the mail for that.
Thank you. Policy and Personnel, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, Policy and Personnel has nothing to report tonight.
Nice time. Second, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. We're now going to our special committees.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
My question is for Policy and Personnel Committee. I have some constituents in District Three that have complained about overgrown vegetation, and I know we are required by the state to have an appeals board for those, for citations that may be given for overgrown vegetation. I would just like to have maybe where we're at as far as establishing that appeals board so I can tell my constituents.
What we're doing, we just checked on that. We are required to have an appeals board, so we're getting three people. So one of them probably be out of Policy and Personnel, and the other two out, you can't be from the court, so we are doing that.
Okay, thank you, and I would just like to, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but I'd like to offer my services if need be for any reason. Like I said, I have several constituents that have complained. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to special committees. Jail outside, Commissioner Martin.
Mr. Chairman, out of the jail, there's only a third annual prisoners, which 64 of those ladies, so I'll have to report this time.
Anybody got any questions? Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Martin. Charlie, we have nothing to report at this time. Any other business to bring up? Any new business? Item one, Commissioner Wels.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 34-2014, a resolution to ratify Chapter 979 of the Public Acts of 1998 to authorize the recipient of funds pursuant to that chapter and to designate the allocation of such funds. The Budget and Finance Committee met on September the 23rd to consider the attached resolution, which was requested by the District Attorney's Office. The resolution provides that a portion of the funds recovered from forfeited property shall be distributed to a local government when law enforcement agencies of the local government are involved in the investigations. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Resolution Number 34-2014 by the full commission. The Financial Management Committee met on September the 25th to consider the same resolution and voted unanimously to recommend approval by the full commission. I so move.
Second, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Lisa Gallo, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Lawrence Fox.
Yes.
Carl E. Baldwin.
Yes.
Carl E. Baldwin.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Cochrane.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Jerry Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prager.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tony Savage.
Yes.
Dane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Hensy.
Yes.
You want one change to go?
Thank you. Motion passes. Item two, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Mr. Chairman, so now we have Resolution Number 35-2014, is a resolution to support the request of the Elvis L Floyd Nursery Research Center to the state of Tennessee to fund it in the amount of $4.5 million for the purpose of facility expansion. Further than it says, the research center plans to request the amount of $4.5 million from the state of Tennessee to fund an expansion, which will include the addition of laboratory, office, greenhouse space to support youth programs in salt and weed science, water management. The Economic and Agriculture Development Committee met this afternoon, and we support this 5-0 in our committee, and I so move.
Thank you. Second. Second, Commissioner Savage. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Item three, Commissioner Dane Starkey.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 36-2014, a resolution to express support of the 90% or more reading goal of the Warren County school system, to support the Children's Reading Foundation of Warren County, and to encourage parents and caregivers to read aloud with children for 20 minutes each day. The Education Committee met on September 29th to consider Resolution Number 36-2014, which was requested by the school system. The resolution states the commission's support of efforts of the school system to have 90% or more of its students reading at or above grade level by the end of third grade. The Education Committee voted unanimously to report approval, to recommend approval of the resolution by the full commission, and a copy of that is attached, is attached for review, and I so move.
If you have a second, Mary.
Second.
Second. Second by. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item four, Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution. It's Number 37-2014. It's a resolution to designate membership of the Veterans Advisory Committee and establish terms thereof. The Policy and Personnel Committee met on October 13th to consider appointments of this committee. The Veterans Advisory Committee was established by a resolution in 2006 with a membership of five citizens. 2008, the second resolution was passed, which added the commanders of local BFW, American Legion posts, and members of the committee. Through adoption of Resolution 37-2014, the commandant of the local Bobby Ray Marine Corps League detachment 1377 will be added to this membership. The five members on the Veterans Advisory Committee are appointed for four-year terms to run consecutively with the term of the county's safety. Commanders of BFW, American Legion, along with the command, commandant of the Marine Corps League serve as long as they hold a position in that post. These positions are currently held by Johnny Banks of the BFW, John Davis of the American Legion, and John Poe of the Marine Corps League. Again, we met on October 13th and passed committee 5-0, and I so move.
Got a motion, I say about Carl E. Baldwin. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item five, we're with Drew. Item six, Commissioner Terry Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number 39-2014, a resolution to authorize the Warren County Executive to enter into a general maintenance agreement with Tennessee Department of Transportation. The Financial Management Committee met on October the 7th to consider a general maintenance agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation regarding buckle, safety improvement. Projects were six, following six county roads, Short Mountain Road, Chris Springs Road, Francis Ferry Road, Old Rock Island Road, Old Well Road, and Red Road. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this agreement, which has been reviewed and approved by the county attorney. And Mr. Glenn informed me that these projects will run about $300,000, and they're fully funded by the state, and I so move.
Got a motion. Second by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire. Any discussion?
I've got, I've got a question, Mr. Chairman, that I may. Do we know how they, I know they're going to replace a lot of signs and they're going to remove a lot of signs, and I don't know if I need to be asking, leaving this question or not, but just down Short Mountain Road, there's a hearing impaired sign, and I'm just wondering, how do they determine if that hearing impaired sign is no longer needed in that area?
Lee, do you have any answer to that?
The Tennessee Department of Safety, they're the one that run, run this safety audit, so it was up to them to determine what signs would be replaced and whatnot. I could look into that possibility on that sign. It could be maybe the, you know, I don't know if the child has moved or no longer lives there, but we'll definitely look into it to be sure that if it's needed, it will be replaced.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate that.
And we'll get back to you on that. Item up, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Lawrence Fox.
Yes.
Carl E. Baldwin.
Yes.
Carl E. Baldwin.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Cochrane.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Jerry Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prager.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tony Savage.
Yes.
Dane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Hensy.
Yes.
You want one more change to go?
Thank you. Item seven, Commissioner Ron Lee, please.
Mr. Chairman, can I have permission to list the seven and eighty point half?
No, we need to have separate.
We do need seven, all right. Okay, the Economic and Agriculture Development Committee met on September 20th to consider appointments of the Airport Zoning Committee and the Warren County Memorial Airport Commission. Both of these positions were previously held by former Commissioner Clinton Hill. The committee voted unanimously to appoint Commissioner Billy Earl Jones to the Airport Zoning Committee for a four-year term to expire September 2018, and I so move.
Got a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Prager. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item eight, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the committee also voted unanimously to recommend to appoint the appointment of Commissioner Billy Earl Jones to the Warren County Memorial Airport Commission for a four-year term to expire September 2018, and I so move.
Got a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Ray. Any discussion? Got a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Ray. Any discussion?
He read the second one again.
Is it?
No.
No, it's, it's a.
He said Billy Earl Jones, he was supposed to be.
Yeah, that, that's right, Mr. Bobby. He, see Clinton Hill was on both of these calls. And Billy Earl's going to be on both of them.
Alright.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item nine, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment to the Family and Crisis Board. On September the 30th, Policy and Personnel Committee met to consider an appointment of the Family and Crisis Board. The committee voted unanimously to reappoint Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire to the Family and Crisis Board for a four-year term to expire September 2018 and I so move.
Got a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Boyd. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Item ten, that's, the Policy and Personnel Committee met on September 30th to consider an appointment to, that's, I don't know why I need to. Okay, appointment to the Planning Commission. I recommend that we put Ron Lee on the Planning Commission. This position will be for a four-year term to expire September 2018 and I need a motion to approve, please. Motion by Commissioner Prater, second by Commissioner Starkey. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eleven, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic and Agricultural Development Committee met on September 23rd to consider an appointment to the Main Street Municipal Board. The committee voted unanimously to recommend reappointment of Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire to serve on the Main Street Municipal Board for a four-year term to expire 2018, September of 2018. I so move.
Got a motion, is a second. Second by Commissioner Brand, Commissioner Carleen Brown. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item twelve, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment of Public Records Commission. Policy and Personnel again met on September the 30th to consider appointments of public record commissions. The committee voted unanimously to recommend reappointment of the following persons to the commission. The four-year term will expire 2018. And Judge Larry Stanley, Lisa Scott, County Clerk, Attorney Smith, Thresher, Beach, Billy Earl Jones, County Commissioner, James Dillon, County Historian, Jean Hobson, County Activist, and Brad Walker, Education. And I so move.
Got a motion, is a second. Second by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item thirteen, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic and Agricultural Development Committee met on September the 23rd to consider appointments or reappointments to the Tri-County Railroad Authority. The county is represented by two persons on this board, the county executive or his designated representative, and a county representative. These positions were previously held by Jana Wilson Ringman and Royce Davenport who's now deceased. The committee voted unanimously to recommend county executive Herschel Wells and Jana Wilson Ringman to serve on the Tri-County Railroad Authority for four-year terms to expire September 2018 and I so move.
Got a motion, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item fourteen, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Mr. Chairman, this is an appointment of the Adult or Indian Business Board. Again, we met on September 30th to consider these appointments and I have contacted each member and they have said that they would like to be put back on. The members are listed below: Earl Ball, Mary Ann Bishop, Charles Fogle, Marvin Lust, and Tommy Savage. And it was unanimous and I so move tonight.
Got a motion, is a second. Second by Commissioner England. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Mr. Martin. I would like to thank, and I'm sure from the court there, all these citizens that are serving on these boards for that's, at no, no fee and it's just out of their time. And I certainly appreciate it and I'm sure you did too. Okay, item fifteen, I received a letter from Greg Brock who served on the Industrial Development Board stating that he wished to resign. So, I need a motion and a second to accept his resignation. Is a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Prater, second by Commissioner Carleen Brown. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item sixteen, to take his position on the Industrial Development Board, I would like to nominate Gary Jenkins. He worked at Carrier, he and Joe Eaton, they were the two superintendent on Carrier when it was in operation. He is well versed in industry and I would like a motion and a second.
I think you have a motion.
Motion by Carl Baldwin, second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seventeen, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment, members to the Audit Committee. Policy and Personnel met on September the 30th to consider an appointment of Audit Committee to fill the unexpired term of former Commissioner George Smart. The committee again voted unanimously to recommend appointment of Commissioner Randy England to serve on the Audit Committee to fill the remainder of the term which will expire January 2015 and I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And second by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item eighteen, I present the appointment of Diane Starkey to the Tennessee County Commissioners Association and I would appreciate that.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second Commissioner Carl D. Bond. Carl D.?
Close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item nineteen, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Highway Bridge Amendment. This is where, a few months back, we had a truck that was involved in an accident that was towed. We're taking the insurance recovery money and we're taking and then bringing $42,498 to match the $27,602 to purchase the new truck which does have snowplow and everything else. Thank you.
Do you make a motion, President? Is that a motion, Gary?
Yes.
Second, second by Commissioner England. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Lawrence Vaughn?
Yes.
Carl E. Baldwin?
Yes.
Carl E. Baldwin?
Yes.
Danny Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Earl Jones?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Rudley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Dan Starkey?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alyssa Henson?
Yes.
Any one more change to go?
Motion to approve. Got a motion. I think we need a motion on that. County Clerk Lisa Scott presents the motion.
This is Ms. Lynn O'Gree. Justin Lanier, Chrissy Y. Jenkins, Brenda Garcia, Al Wong, I think, I'm sorry, Al Wong, L. Rutledge, Shonda Dunn, Holly Kendall, and Morris Throw.
Got a motion, double, motion by Commissioner Bond, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin. That's a good one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, announcement, out at Bridge, we talked to the superintendent of the General Manager there and he said we could, might take a tour of that. So, we did. We, you'd like to go on a tour, I need to get that set up. If you'd like to go on that tour of Bridge Stone, you would call the office and let us know that I know that I mean wants to go and I'll try to set that up. It's about a four-hour tour. About 30 minutes or four-hour tour. I think the four-hour tour will be a lot better. So, you would call the office on that. Does anybody have anything else? Anybody? Motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yeah.